She asked me to help her with something, my child.
I have your attention, please. We'll open the meeting here this evening with the City Council. If we could, please, start with by the salute to the flag. And I guess I'm the one that's going to be starting it out, so please stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also at the head table this evening is Donna Woodman, our financial director, and our city manager, Scott Myers. And if we could have Mary Reynolds, the secretary, please call her on.
Counselor Doyle.
Pardon?
She's absent.
Yeah, she's absent.
Counselor Bounce?
Present.
Counselor Littman?
Present.
Counselor Baer?
Present.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Wow.
Presiding Mayor Protem.
Here.
Unbelievable.
Staff is in attendance. I would just like to have the city manager, if you would, talk to us a little bit about our mayor.
I will. Thank you, Mayor Protem Baldock. So Mayor Engler had sent out a communication at the end of last week identifying that he's been dealing with some health issues. I think a number of you have known that there's been some issues he's faced over the last month or two. In the middle of last week, some more specific news and some more serious news came back that he's been diagnosed with colon cancer and he was, he asked me to share that information tonight in a general sense, to put the information out. So it's with his blessing. He is out in California where he has the support of family and for the surgery and also recovering time afterwards. Surgery is anticipated to occur this week and recovery time right now a little bit up in the air, but there's a strong likelihood that he'll be out of the area for at least a month and maybe closer to two months. So certainly our thoughts and prayers are with him and for a successful surgery and a speedy recovery and yes, full confidence in all of you to shoulder the load in his absence. So that's the information on the mayor that I have for you.
Thank you. Okay, just for the people out there in the attendance this evening is, I'm here taking the place of the mayor and we'll probably have some mistakes here and there, but we'll get through it somehow with the city manager and we'll do the best we can. All right, everybody had a chance to read the minutes. There are no presentations. Is there any changes in the minutes? They were redone and so far, everybody's okay with them? All right, and we don't have to vote on those as far as I know now. It's a change, right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll go to the consent and action items. Temporary traffic order 2716 New Hampshire Pumpkin Festival documents.
For a motion to...
Yes, we have a motion for the closure of that item, Pumpkin Festival Temporary Traffic Order 201716 New Hampshire Pumpkin Festival.
We need, we don't need to read that, correct?
We don't need to read it, no. It's fairly similar to last year's traffic order. The closure happens early in the day on Friday to help with the setup. The event does have some hours on Friday night this year as well as the full day on Saturday. I think the only significant, maybe two significant traffic changes is Beacon Street East will be open around the loop. One lane will be restricted at Hanover Street where they're going to be offering horse-drawn carriage rides this year. That'll come down the one lane of Beacon East, loop onto Church Street, come back down on Main Street and back onto Hanover. And then I believe that Water Street will be accessible. Beacon West will be closed to the point at Water Street and from Beacon West below Water Street, I believe, will be open for vehicles to make that motion. But the general timing of it and street closures are pretty similar to where they've been in the past.
Yeah, second, right?
We have a second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, you did.
Okay, I'll make a second.
Second by Counselor Hamel. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Yes.
I think something new is, there's a beer garden tent that's going to be on Beacon West.
Yes.
Okay. Since there's nobody here from there that I can see from the Pumpkin Fest thing, could they, or did they get in touch with Hector's about that being in front of their door, basically?
Yeah, I think Hector's has been actively, I can't say actively, but Hector's has been a big supporter of the festival and even though that's going on there, Hector's has done very good in business as well. We did have beer tents in the past. They've shifted all of the vendors. There'll be no vendors in the City Hall parking lot. The various vendors are spread out over in the area of Beacon West and down on that loop of the Bank of New Hampshire area.
Okay. Yeah, I know Carl was very enthusiastic about it, but could we just double make sure that she was contacted or talked with about it?
Confirm that with the chamber, yes.
Have someone go over there and make sure?
We'll confirm with the chamber. They're the lead one on this, but yes, that will be...
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, anyone else? None? All right, we've already taken that in the motion, haven't we?
Oh, we got a vote, yeah. Just call the question.
Call the question. Mr. Bounce? Counselor Bounce?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Yep, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That was the pumpkin. Then we have temporary traffic order 201716 Homecoming Parade. On page sixteen of your packet. Does anybody have any questions about that motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Counselor Littman, seconded by Counselor Bounce. All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Latching right through these babies. Citizen comments for Matt is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone out there in the audience that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Am I going to have to swallow it?
There you go.
There you go. We'll get you a little closer.
That's better.
Anyone out there would like to... Nothing? Okay. Interviews. Do we have Chris Conademitraki here this evening? Please come forward. Date your name and address and tell us why you'd like to be on that. Right at the mic there, sir.
Right here, great. My name is Chris Conademitraki. I reside in Concord, but I have a business at 635 Main Street in downtown Laconia. And I was asked by Mr. Bounce and it was suggested that I would be a good fit for the Downtown TIF Council. So I submitted an application and hope everybody got a chance to review it.
Yes, we did, yes.
Just for the benefit of the public, could you share specifically what downtown business interests you have and...
Sure. I own an engineering company, G.C. Engineering, and our office is located at 635 Main Street in downtown Laconia. And we own the building and we've worked hard to update it and attract new businesses to our building. And I guess we've tried to help with the revitalization of downtown Laconia, not only to help us, but to help other up-and-coming businesses and feel like we have a significant role to play. So that being said, I think that it's kind of a good fit, really, to be on the council for the Downtown TIF.
If I could ask a final question? Just in terms of your expertise professionally that could be helpful to people on the TIF committee already?
Sure, yeah. I have, my background is in engineering. I have a mechanical engineering degree from Northeastern University. I've worked with real estate, with my family's business, for over 30 years. And a couple of years ago, I decided I need to go back to school, so I got my master's in business as well as a master's in finance. So I do all of the, kind of the finance and vetting for our company, any new acquisitions, as well as any type of, I don't know, additions to our business, any type of new planning that we need to do for going forward with our business. So try and keep up with standards for technology and as well as, like I said before, have a significant interest in the community in downtown Laconia.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
As a downtown tenant, I'm very familiar with Chris and Mark's efforts with respect to the downtown area, the improvements they've made in the downtown, which is why I reached out to him because, in my view, he's a perfect fit for the Downtown TIF Committee.
Yeah, I'm going to go along with Dave and say, if you haven't been into their building, to see what they've done there. They did a really nice job of fixing that building up.
Thank you.
Any other councils? I want to thank you for coming forward because we need the people in the city to come forward and get on these committees. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too. Nominations, appointments, and elections. Donna Enson, speaking, reappointment to the Conservation Commission. Is she here this evening?
Dean Enson.
Dean.
What's that?
Dean.
Dean, I'm sorry.
He interviewed two weeks ago, so he's up for a nomination to be reappointed if there's a council looking to make that motion this evening.
Do I have someone that would like to make the motion to...
That's later on?
Counselor Hamel?
Motion's later on, right?
Nope.
Now?
The new council rules, we've adjusted it, so we bring up nominations early in the agenda.
Ready.
Council rules.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Dean Enson, seeking reappointment for the Conservation Commission for a three-year term, expiring the end of August of 2020.
We have a second. Second by Counselor Baer. All in favor, say aye.
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 Raise my hand, one of the two.
Five in favor. Motion carries. Okay, how about Karen Horn?
Yes, I'd like to table Karen Horn's seeking appointment until the next meeting because we had Mr. Conademitraki interview today, so we can take them both up at the next meeting. So I'd like to table hers for right now.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, now page 23. All right. Communications. Anyone have any communications for this evening? None? Okay, we'll go down to public hearings. I guess we have to go into, motion to go into public hearing?
I think you can just declare it. I think you can just declare it on them.
Give the date and...
Resolution of the, for the grant. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Just that the notice of a public hearing was made in the Daily Sun and the date that it was made.
Okay, it was, I don't know, I don't have it here.
It's right underneath.
Can I help you?
It's on the agenda.
That's the one right here.
Yeah.
Resolution 2017-23, relative to authorizing the city management to accept and expend grants on behalf of the city in the amount of $50,000 from Hammer Grant 2017-2018. This notice was in the public hearing made in Tuesday, September 19, 2017, addition to Laconia Daily Sun, City Hall, Yale Memorial Library, Laconia Community Center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Okay, does anybody in the audience? The time is 7:16 on Monday. Does anybody in the audience would like to speak to this issue? Nobody? Okay, we recall the resolution closed at 7:16.
Seventeen.
Say seventeen.
What's that?
Give it another minute.
Give it a minute.
Give it another minute.
Minute.
To 7:17.
I know it's...
7:17. I know, another minute. Mayor's report. I don't have anything. The city manager already reported on our mayor, so we'll go into committee reports.
The mayor of the Finance Committee met...
Yes.
Tonight have a report on that. We were meeting in follow-up to last council's meeting, looking at funding options for an additional $1.2 million loan for the Laconial Theater project. We reviewed a series of options. The options were in the context of that four basic principles. One, that we work within the city's tax cap. Two, that the repayment of money's loan from the general fund, fund balance should be a priority over time for the downtown TIF account, meaning that, you know, the general fund is going to be replenished over time. Thirdly, that the funding of basic theater operational costs for heating, cooling, lighting, ensuring a general cleanup upkeep will be, need to be addressed subsequently. But that, you know, the amount that we're collecting on the total loan would pay for over half of those costs. And that, lastly, the city should not be taking on risk in the booking of events or performers. So basically, we looked at four options. The first one is the one that we elected and that involves taking $600,000 from the existing $1,39,503 balance in the downtown TIF fund. The remaining $600,000 taken from general fund balance, which would be replenished over a four-year period. We also made note that the existing TIF policy would need to be updated to include language that says that the TIF funding could include economic development opportunities. And so we recommended that option unanimously to the committee and I think we would take this up later in the agenda.
Finance, so nothing, anybody have anything for your committee and any of the committee reports?
There was nothing additional for finance other than that, what I just reported on.
All right, the project updates report. Laconia project updates of 9/2017.
City manager's report.
Yep.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So you do have in your packet the projects' updates for September. We're kicking if on roads, on roads again. So North Main Street was addressed with the base course over the weekend. At some point in the near future, we'll be raising structures and doing the final course as well as doing the section of Veteran Square that was cold-plained. We continue to be working on Winter Street and Adam Street as well. Work on Lakeside Avenue, dealing with the poured concrete crosswalks is... I was down there Friday, so I haven't been down there today, but it's scheduled for the next coming week or two on that, so we'll be working there. Again, there will be some detours to allow that to cure. We're to handle a couple of the sections, a couple of crosswalks at a time so we can reroute traffic to allow the setting to occur and still allow maneuvering actions down on Lakeside Avenue. We're also been working on, the Master Plan Subcommittee has been meeting several times there and they're making progress on the land use chapters. The Dog Park, working on final details with Eversource and the project elements in the transmission corridor for the easement there, but we're optimistic we'll be moving forward on that. And then in the Norman and Square, Busy Corner, the only thing we're waiting on there is a meter and backflow for the irrigation that's in there. And the folks from Brock Industries did step up and do some maintenance on their property across the street, so we certainly appreciate them doing that as well. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have on that. I do have one appointment announcement that I will share with you tonight. It's for one of the managers' appointments to the Planning Board. The gentleman I'm appointing tonight to fill the remainder of a vacant term running through March of 2019, the gentleman named Dave Broton. He lives on Marcia Ann Way, which is out off of...
Hilliard.
Hilliard. I was going to say Pendleton, but that wouldn't have been right. It's Hilliard's.
What ward is that?
It's in Ward 1.
Ward 1.
Ward 1. And Dave's background is, he's been in construction field for 45 years. He's been the president of the Salem, New Hampshire Contractors Association. He's a design-build estimator on HVAC in plumbing systems. And he's personally built or designed 15 homes here in the state of New Hampshire, so he brings a good skill set to the Planning Board, Planning Board with that type of background. And so I'm bringing that to your attention, that he will be on the Planning Board once he comes down and gets sworn in.
What's his name again?
Dave, I want to say it's Broton, B-R-O-U-G-H-T-O-N. So with that, I'll take any questions you have on the report or any other items tonight.
It's not so much of a question, but I brought this up to the city manager a little while ago. I had an opportunity to speak to Molly Holman, Bill Holman's wife. And I thought it would be a good idea, it's up to the council, that that new flowered area that we just finished with the landscaping and all that, maybe be named in honor of Bill Holman, who had the Busy Corner store there for as long as I can remember. You know, maybe a stone in the pavement area or something like that, but it would be nice to name that little corner after him, my thought. So I haven't heard back from Molly. She was going to ask the family about coming up with a stone or something, so just wanted to let the council know.
Where is it?
Busy Corner.
Busy Corner.
You're talking about Busy Corner?
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, Bill Holman owned that store forever. And he was well-known and it would be nice to remember him by putting something there in his name. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, yes.
Manager, just for the benefit of the public, can you update us on the Irving Oil properties that have been concerns?
Looks good down on South Main Street.
Yeah, Irving. So Irving Oil did come in and fence off the property on South Main Street at Province. They went through our planning and code office for the demolition permit. They handled any materials that might have been in there as far as lead or asbestos and tiles and that type of stuff properly. And that building was razed a couple of weeks ago. They indicated to me that they will put some kind of a maintenance schedule on that. Right now, it's got gravel and it looks pretty clean, but we all know that weeds can pop through and that type of stuff, but they indicated that they would, they're not looking to sell the property at this point, but they would put it on a maintenance schedule. I know they have also fenced off the old office building on Messer at Union Ave. And down below, they're not so much visible from the street line, there's a warehouse building that they also own. So I know they've had some activity there. And again, I think they are going through and handling whatever types of materials that need to be handled appropriately as far as a demo. Last I checked, which was probably only the middle of last week, they hadn't applied for their demolition permit as of yet. I'm not sure whether it was issued in the subsequent days, but I know that their intent is to take that building down and also the one below it. And again, do a maintenance on it and, you know, going forward, so it's in decent shape.
Any other set?
Thank you, by the way, for your efforts with respect to both, well, all three properties. But Busy Corner, that vacant lot looks so much better when you drive by it. And I drive by Irving and Messer Street every day and it's looking better. Thank you.
Counselor Littman?
Terms of the front porch, I'm not sure if that's the right term.
Yes, she has been working on those and we plan to have some awards for you for the next meeting. She had some family and grandkids out from Seattle, so she was on a short week recently, so she could spend some family time. But it's amazing, she can be here in the office one day of the week and she still bangs out a 14-page newsletter that's filled with information. So we will have the front porch awards for you on the next agenda.
Finally. It's been a long time. I got to just go back one item here. Citizen comments, request to comment on current agenda items. Anybody in the audience would like to come up and speak or seeing none, we will continue. Under new business, approval of the City Laconia Hazard Mitigation Plan 2017. We all have that document. And I believe the city manager can bring us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this is an update, as you mentioned, to the City of Laconia Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's typically a five-year update that we work with. We got some grant funding from this, or for this, from the Department of Homeland Security. And we utilize the facilitator leadership of the folks at the Lakes Region Planning Commission. Chief Erickson and his staff took the lead on it, but it would involve a number of city departments and a number of stakeholders outside. And basically, it looks to update any types of responses to hazardous situations, whether they be natural disasters or man-made in the sense of, you know, something through an event or something through a structure that we identify. It helps us in the planning process. It helps us coordinate resources. It also puts us in line for being able to receive funding in case there's reimbursement of a certain type of declaration. So on a number of fronts, it's important for us to be planning for this, but it's also important on some of the replacement funding for challenges. Sometimes, you know, disasters are declared after a blizzard or a rain event, those types of things. So it was a very good cooperative effort across the staff. I know Chief Erickson is here. If you had any specific questions for him tonight?
Anyone? None?
Sorry, chief, I tried.
You want a question, chief?
Okay, and we also have requests to schedule a public hearing.
We need to take a vote on that.
We do have to take a vote?
Make a motion that we...
Accept.
Accept the plan as submitted.
Second.
Second by, first by Counselor Littman, seconded by Counselor Baer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Thank you for getting that done.
Yeah, very, very well.
That was a tough one.
Now we have the question, schedule a public hearing on the ballot, question regarding Lottery Keno, 603... lottery keno, 603 game. Yes, Counselor?
Mayor Protem, I move to go with the staff recommendation of holding the public hearing on October 10, 2017, during the regular council meeting.
October 10. Okay.
Do we have to be more complete than that?
Do I have a...I have a second. Any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Funding for 1.2 million of the Colonial Theater project within the limits of the property tax gap.
You gonna make that motion, Counselor Bounds?
I move to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation of using $600,000 from the fund balance and $600,000 in the existing Downtown TIF funds, starting, for a total of 1.2 million, and starting in fiscal year 219, to repay the general fund $150,000 a year for the next four years from future Downtown TIF funds, for a total commitment of 1.2 million, subject to an amendment to the Downtown TIF plan to include economic development opportunities as one of the included uses.
Just a procedural question. Do we have to take the...
I think we can approve this and then take the other one off the table.
Now, second that.
Seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any further...no? All in favor of that? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have the second part of that.
So that was four in favor, one opposed?
No, I wasn't opposed. My hand, I was slow.
Oh, okay.
Unanimous.
Unanimous.
I just wanted to make sure we got it right. Okay, now I move to remove the Colonial Theater Resolution dated September 11, 2017, from the table.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Hamel. All in favor? Aye.
Finally. This is the fun one.
It was?
This is the one I'm looking for. This is the one I've been looking forward to. I move to approve the Colonial Theater Resolution dated September 11, 2017, that was read into the record in its entirety as presented in conjunction with the funding mechanism approved at the September 25, 2017 council meeting.
We'll have a second. Counselor Hamel. Any further questions? None. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Finally.
All showing a great deal of vision, really.
Okay. Yes, Counselor?
Today is May 2...no, I'm sorry.
No.
All right.
Well, way ahead of that.
Yeah. It's the heat. You're okay.
You're all set?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, we already did that. What else is on this agenda? Okay, request to allow snowmobiles to use a sidewalk. That's been postponed?
I think we need number 25 on the bottom of the page you just turned over, I think, Mayor Protem.
Twenty-five. Oh, okay. Second reading of Resolution 2017-23 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend grants on behalf of the city in the amount of $50,000 from the Granite Hammer Grant 2017-2018.
So this was the public hearing that we just held to expend those funds?
So I move a second reading of Resolution 2017-23 relative to authorizing the city manager to accept and expend grants on behalf of the city in the amount of $50,000 from the Granite Hammer Grant 2017 forward slash 2018.
Second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think where you were going with the snowmobiles, I think since Counselor Baer said it was hot and 90 degrees, that we'll leave that one on the table for tonight. There's no additional information.
Good plan.
Oh.
Table.
Counselor comments? Yeah, counsel comments. Is there any counsel comments for us this evening? None?
I just, I don't know if you mentioned at the last meeting about regrets that we're losing our mayor from...
I think the mayor stated that, that he said it was a very...
Will you be at the next meeting, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, well...
We'll be able to throw rice or something.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have any future agenda items? None? These are all in the future. Thank God.
Let me try one. I move to adjourn.
Are there any?
The mayor can just declare it.
We don't have to go into public, on public sessions?
If you want to.
Oh, what can we do?
What are we gonna discuss?
I don't have anything for you tonight. I think you just declare the meeting adjourned, Mayor Protem.
Yes, we declare the meeting adjourned at 7:36.
Adjourned.
You're kidding.